Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm a little bit late. Traffic is pretty rough out there, as all of us probably know, including, I got a text from Bezna, Council on Noon. He's late, he's running late. But I'd like to proceed, if there's no objection from members of both Subcommittee, just to start the dialogue. I know we have less than an hour now, and I know there's lots that we're going to want to talk about. So with that, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Council Elliot?
Here.
Council Melonazzo?
Here.
Council on Noon, School Committee Man Nutter?
Here.
School Committee Man Dakota?
Here.
And School Committee Man Lay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I know Council on Noon's on his way, so, all members, all will be present. With that, we left off at the last meeting, we had a presentation from the city on the financial status, and we had an update from the school department on the financial status. You were continuing through your evaluation, or not so much an audit, but financial analysis of the city. So, did you want to continue on some of those items that we had been addressing? And I'm going to go back to look at my notes to see exactly what those were two weeks ago. Or did any members of the Subcommittee have any questions, any follow-up, any issues that you want to raise before that? I'm not sure if there's any update from the city on, I know one outstanding item was free cash, so, nothing yet. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the Joint Committee, we won't most likely have that number until next month, or possibly early December. All we do have is fund balances, and I know the auditor has some contribution to this, and Mr. Baldwin can add to that, but we don't have any free cash number as of yet.
Mr. Baldwin?
So, the Finance Department is actively, for the Department of Revenue's purposes, closing out fiscal year 18, submitting required reports to the state. The city auditor, who is here tonight, I know is actively working on the balance sheet and the submission to the Department of Revenue. However, this is a bit early in the year for a city's size of Lowell to have that prepared. So, we do anticipate sometime in the not-so-distant future to have a better idea of what free cash will be. However, I do anticipate it will be several weeks before a more complete picture is known by the city.
Okay. No, I think that's a good point, because smaller communities, some may already have their free cash figure, but it's a $360 million budget, so, by the time we close out and pay bills, et cetera, it takes us a little bit of time. So, with that, Madam Superintendent, would you like to proceed?
Thank you. So, since we last met, we have done some additional assessment of the budget, and we have a budget-adjusted summary that was presented to the school committee last evening, and we are going to continue that conversation tomorrow evening relative to potential movement into some critical areas. I can have Assistant Superintendent Turner share with you just a brief overview of that process, if that is what the council wished.
I personally think it's a good idea. I was in the Subcommittee, agree. I think as we move forward, we're just trying to sort out the financial position of both the city, not that we're intervening, but and the impact that that may or may not have on the city side. So, I'm fine with that. I know that we did have some discussions and questions the last time, so I think it will be helpful.
After completing a very extensive review of the budget, we have identified that there is a $4.69 million deficit. That does not include the $2 million that we do have to pay back to the Food Service Fund. The $4.6 million deficit includes $3.2 million in underfunded accounts, and $1.48 million in offsets or grants that were not available. Since this is all numbers, we've included all of the Munis reports and reconciliations to prove each of the numbers that we suggest. If, to summarize with the $3.2 million in underfunded accounts, I will point out the two largest. One is transportation. There's a $1.3 million deficit in special ed transportation. If you look in your packet, there actually is a Munis printout showing that historicals, there was $6.3 million in historical special ed transportation last year. If you use the contracts and the current routes, it's $6.3 million in special ed transportation this year. It only has 5.1.
Okay, that's good. Can we just, can you go back to the 4.6 and just repeat that? It's, I just want to make sure. I haven't had a chance to go through this.
Okay.
And there is a lot of information. I'm sure we'll have other meetings. It might be helpful to us if we could have this advanced, so we can probably just go through it with you.
Okay.
So, 4.6...
Yes.
2.3 of that, okay.
4.6 million, 3.2 million is underfunded accounts.
Okay. So, if it's okay with the members of Subcommittee, can we ask questions, you know, particularly on these large dollar items, rather than going, we'll just go through, what are some of those big accounts? And I think you started to get into it, so excuse me if I'm just trying to process this.
That's fine.
Mr. Nutter?
Before you get into that, let's go into the detail of, it is, it was 4.6, but we're able to offset that by some other accounts that we have available. So, why don't we explain what those are, and then what the remaining balance actually is?
Okay. So, it's $4.69 million without considering the $2 million to Food Service. However, we're able to bring the deficit down to 2.4 million because of the additional Chapter 70 revenue that we received, and because of hurricane relief, and an emergency relief grant that we just received. So, that equals 2.2.
That's on page one. Okay. Can you go through the three, can you go through what those impacts are?
Sure. So, on the top page of the memo, there's three revenue items listed. Additional Chapter 70 was 1.1 million. Hurricane relief is 485,000. An emergency relief is 572,000. This equals 2.2 million.
Okay. So, your deficit is 2.4, essentially 2.5. Can you please go through what those large accounts that ran a deficit to 3.2 million?
Sure. The largest one is the special ed transportation line. The special ed transportation line was budgeted at 5.1 million, I believe, and the actuals were 6.3.
Why, do we know why that is, if members of my, why was that underfunded by?
I'm not quite sure. I don't know if it's that they didn't, I'm not sure why it was underfunded. Did you ask why it was underfunded, or why it came in so high?
Either or. Why was it underfunded? I mean, don't we know what our special ed costs are, because that's something that's bid, so you should be able to put that into the budget?
Well, I can say this. If you look at, when you're budgeting, you look at historicals or you look at contract rates. The contract for the special ed transportation, if I map out the per-bus rate and how many buses that we needed, it comes up to 6.3. So, looking at a projection, it was 6.3. Looking at historicals and Munis, which is also included in the packet, it was 6.3. So, the historicals and the projection, based on the contract, both equal 6.3. So, I'm not quite sure where the $5 million budget number came from.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, on the transportation, on the sped transportation, is it the responsibility of the school department under their budget, or is it a city responsibility on the transportation? Because I know past practice, I think it might be on the school side, but I'm just wondering, from a liability standpoint, whose responsibility is it?
Well, I do know that it's our responsibility to budget it and put it into our budget. So, if we budgeted 5.4 million and it's 6.3, that was our responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we get some clarification on that? Because I think that's a good point that's raised consistently, that it's a city's financial responsibility, but we don't do the bidding, nor do we put it into our budget. Do you know that, Mr. Baldwin?
We can take a look and prepare something for the Subcommittee.
Okay.
My understanding from talking with the Department of Education is that there's a couple ways that it can be done. The way Lowell does it is Lowell gives a cash contribution to the school department. Out of that cash contribution, the school busing, the transportation is included. That cash contribution goes to pay for the transportation, or part of that goes to pay for the transportation. So, we were given, I believe, $15 million this year, but out of that $15 million, it was, I think we had it budgeted somewhere around $9 million for transportation. So, out of the $15 million that we actually got in cash contribution, the bulk of that is put in the budget for transportation. There are a few communities in the state where, in the city-presented budget, there is a, you know, under the schools, there is a line for how much is going to the schools, and there is a line for transportation. That's broken out clearly, has a separate line. My understanding is it hasn't been done that way here in Lowell for a long time.
Okay.
But, good, Mr. Chairman, if it's our responsibility, and there's been an increase on the sped side of the House, or there's been an increase, I understand there's an increase of the Roger School Transportation as well, is that something that the city manager now needs to look at, or is that something that Superintendent Durkin needs to look at?
I think the bottom line, Mr. Counselor, is that I think all of us have to jointly look at this. You know, we've kind of reached the point, and we've reached the stage where, you know, well, it's your responsibility, or it's our responsibility. We can't do us versus them. This is our responsibility as a city.
Okay. So, can we, can I entertain a motion that we get a report from the city manager and the solicitor, the CFO, on exactly what the process is, what the state law is, what the requirements, and how can we sort? Because it's, perhaps should have done this before now, but I think it's a point well taken. What is the responsibility? Who is bidding it? Who is budgeting it? And to me, it should be all underneath one umbrella to get a grasp on exactly what the cost is, because it is one of these areas that it just continues to balloon. And so, I know Council on Noon, but I want to speak to the manager.
We can get you that report in conversation with the CFO. The way Lowell has done it in this budget is the way Lowell has done it for a great period of time, making one appropriation to the school department. But we will get you that explanation for the Joint Subcommittee.
Okay. I think it'll be helpful, as we move forward, to try to bring, if it needs to be corrected, or a better process. I think that makes sense. Council on Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned about historical funding for special ed transportation. What was the funding for special ed transportation for last year and the year before?
Last year, so after page 19, there's a Munis in the packet. There's a Munis screenshot.
You could help me, because, help me out, because I haven't yet to take a look at it, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, on the Munis screenshot, it shows that in the past years, it was $5 million. So, last year, in 2018, the budget was $5,830,000 for special ed transportation. The actuals were $6.3 million.
And what is the year before then?
The year before that, it was $4.4 million.
What is the actual?
4.5.
Why so much jump, though? Almost $1 million jumped in 2017?
I'm not sure if it's because of the change in vendors and the increased price when they picked the Pride Star. When they picked Pride Star, they were more expensive, so I'm not sure if it's that. I'm not sure if it's because the budget wasn't built with bus monitors in mind, or any, I'm not sure, because there's not a paper trail on what they did. All I can do is look at the actuals in the Munis budget, I mean, in the Munis accounting system.
Currently, currently, how many vendor do we have?
I'm sorry?
Currently, how many vendor do we have for special ed transportation?
We actually have, we have several, but the two main vendors that we have are NRT and Pride Star. Then there are various vendors for homeless transportation.
Was there any discussion of merging those two big entity?
We are.
And will that, you know, result in some saving, maybe?
Yes. From, should I, so, last year, prior to my arrival, there was a decision to go with Pride Star, who was $1.9 million more expensive over a four-year period. So, we would have to wait until the contracts are completed before we could do any reconsideration of who to use.
And this budgeting for special ed transportation was approved by school committee, is that?
Yes, but, if I may, point this out. On the document, on page 19, in column 2, it's highlighted, there's a column that says "expected actuals." Under the expected actuals that was prepared in the budget, it shows $5.4 million as the expected actual for special ed transportation. Well, we know, based on the Munis page, that it's 6.3 million. If you look at the detail behind the 5.4, if I look in the detail in the accounting system, the numbers were consistent. They were making the consistent payments all along. So, if you project it correctly, you would have known that you were looking at a $6.3 million actual.
Chairman?
You know, I don't want to get into, I don't want to get into the Munis system versus the actual. I mean, that's a long discussion. I guess the question is, there was a new contract, and there's a new contract, why wasn't that projected? Wasn't that factored in when the school committee approved that budget?
They, well, it was prior to my...
I know you weren't there. So, somebody there, can somebody who was there answer that? Mr. Nutter?
Based on the information that was provided in the budget, as the Assistant Superintendent tried to state, we, you know, we approved the budget based on the numbers that were shown to us. You know, we can't, we did not know that there was a discrepancy. One of the other things I do want to remind people of, when it comes to special ed transportation, is that anytime, and you can forecast this, and I agree that forecast should have been better, but you could have one student come in anytime during the year, and that one student may cost you another $2,000 to $500,000 in transportation, depending where they're being placed, what the outsourced is. So, when you do that type of budgeting, you kind of do need to try to forecast that in.
Okay. Is that what happened? Does anybody know? I see the Superintendent, Mr. Calfour is here. So, do you have, do you have an answer to this?
Thank you, Monsieur Chair. I think the best thing to do, that I would advise, is that you should ask Mr., the former CFO, because he's the one who prepared that. I had asked the question myself when I saw the report. I said, why, why would you forecast a budget for 5.1, 5.3, I don't remember exactly the number, when the actuals were high? I don't remember exactly the number, "when the actuals were higher." And the answer that was given to me was that they needed to have to ask me, because he believes that in the actuals were other bills that pertains to FY '17. And he did not have access to the accounts to verify that. So, I think my recommendation is that the current CFO should probably talk to the former CFO and verify that. As far as the contract, with respect to being, you know, the new Pride Star contract being $1.9 million higher, that's not there at all. It's not higher, because the contract was based on the exact number of the SPNR contract, exactly, and was readjusted. The SPNR contract was left for two and a half years, and then they had asked that the contract be readjusted for three years, because of their leasing contracts. So, that's why it was higher.
Okay. I don't want to get into that contract, because I know there's some issues with it, but I just want to know. But, we're not going to get, the CFO is gone. So, I guess, I guess there's no explanation that we can get for, you know, a million-dollar gap.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just in keeping along those lines of thinking, I was watching the meeting last night, and am I correct to say that there's about $1.4 million in bills that have not yet been paid for transportation for last year? I'm trying to remember the number. Unpaid, no.
So, to clarify, there was $1.4 million held back for the Aramac food service bills, because there weren't any, I mean, we didn't have any money left in the food service revolving fund. So, that was with that.
Food service.
And the $153,000 was bills that were not paid, like course reimbursements and things like that. As far as this goes, I can say that I, perhaps there is something about, it's just not common practice to push bills forward to the following year. It's not allowed, so I did not anticipate that possibility. However, I can say that I did it both through historicals and using the current contracts. If I use the current contracts, the next page, two pages after page, if you skip past page 19, you'll see Munis, Munis actuals. If you skip past that, you'll see a spreadsheet that shows how much we currently, how many buses we use, how many wheelchair vans we use, and it also shows how much per vehicle, and how many days we utilize those vehicles. And if you add that up, it is $6.3 million that is the budget.
I don't question the numbers, and I sort of want to move on from this. We know there's a deficit. We don't know exactly the reason why there is a deficit, whether it's, unless this data will show us, you know, when I read it later, that there are more, there are more students, there are more routes, there are more chairs. I mean, but regardless, moving forward, we have, this is part of, this is one part of the 4.6. Okay. I think it'd be helpful moving forward, if that information is in there, I think, as we get the report from the manager, I think this is an area that it's a significant cost, significant expense, and we need to do a better job in managing it when we're, you know, when we're scrutinizing every other budget. So, I think this is a major area that we'll be taking, we will look at.
Mr. Dakota?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding that the NRT proposal that was given to us was very short on the number of buses that we really, really needed to have, and that if the NRT proposal had been including the right number of buses, there wouldn't have been that discrepancy that we're talking about. Thank you.
Again, that's in litigation, I believe, so, can we proceed?
Sure. There are two other large items that I would like to point out. The other large item that causes this $3.2 million deficit in undefunded accounts would be regular ed transportation, and that amount seems to match the, how do I phrase this? We, it doesn't seem as though the Roger School buses, the additional routes that were needed for all the changes, it doesn't seem as though those were included, because it just seems like there were four buses missing, and that caused a deficit with that as well. And again, I'm speculating, because there isn't any, we don't have paperwork, we don't have a paper trail, so we're trying to recreate everything. But, we do know that based on the current contracts and the current routes and the current number of buses that we're utilizing, we know that we're $400,000 short in that area as well.
So, essentially, 3.2 is transportation?
3.2, no, there's many smaller items. The other large item would be out-of-district tuition. Out-of-district tuition was $12 million last year. Typically, when you're budgeting for special ed, out-of-district tuition, being that we are in an urban district with a lot of DCF placements and move-ins, we typically take your current out-of-district cost, and you at least multiply that by a 5% increase, because that's what happens with the tuition schools. They charge us 5% more. So, if you did that, it would be $12.6 million. It was brought down to $11 million. There has been, we did see some savings from the day school, but that was all, you know, estimated. And so, because of that, we're looking at at least a $472,000 deficit in this line item. We explained to the school committee that we did not want to add in amounts for move-ins or DCF children, as we normally would do, because we don't want to enlarge the deficit more than it has to be, and we'll just keep projecting each month. We'll meet with the special ed team and update the list accordingly, and bring it to their attention on a monthly basis.
So, for the people that watching at home, I want to be cognizant of them. Can you just briefly explain that $12 million for out-of-district? We have children moving in during the school year that were not factored into this budget. We have some Department of Children and Families, families that place children in the district as a result of family issues at home outside, that come in from outside the other communities, correct? And that dollar figure, on an average, or at least was factored in, $12 million?
$12 million was the tuition amount for last year, yes.
Can you tell me how many children that typically equates to that are either, and it's new children as well?
No, yes, well, the $12 million included all of the students that we serviced last year, and since then, there were seven students added. Then, you have some students.
How many students? Would you happen to know that?
160 at this time.
160 students, and that's an annual cost?
Yes.
So, we get 100, an average of 160 students every year, in addition to, or, because at some point, doesn't those students become part of the foundation budget, and they're counted as the enrollment?
So, the out-of-district tuition students do not include the regular, the children that we service in district. So, we also service in-district students with special ed services. The out-of-district budget, we do have a foundation amount. Last year, it was $45,000. So, our circuit breaker reimbursement is 72% of the amount that exceeds the foundation amount of $45,000. That's an approximate figure, but $45,000. So, when these students come in, back to your original question, if we had $12 million worth of out-of-district tuition costs, and we may place students, we may have students that we realize they may need out-of-district services. That's one thing. The second and third thing would be the DCF placements and the students that move in.
I stand corrected, this is all special ed cost. Okay. My apologies.
Okay.
Okay.
So, those were the three large areas.
Any questions on this, on the three large areas, on the 3.2? Members of the subcommittee, we all set? Okay, thank you. Could you proceed?
Okay. So, those were the three large areas with that. If you want me to proceed and tell you what the additional deficit was caused by, I can continue on that. So, again, so, of the 4.6 million, 3.2 was the undefunded accounts. The additional 1.48 was due to offsets that were not available. Some examples include food service offsets that were not available. Other examples include use of facilities. Other examples include grants that could not cover these amounts that were listed. And if you want me to give some examples, go into detail. I'm not sure if you want me to do that.
I think it'd be helpful if you give us an example or two, to give it both members of the subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. So, you, food service. In December of 2017, there was an administrative review, and that's when the Department of Ed comes in, and they review how you manage a program, including finances. At that time, they noticed that we were doing too many offsets. We were charging off indirect cost. You know, we were taking our regular operating budget and charging it off to the food service revolving account. At that time, they brought it to our attention that it's not allowed. It still happened in the spring of 2018, and the budget for this year was built with that, those same offsets. So, the budget had $1.597 million in offsets, and only $1.2 million are allowed. That is, that is being generous, because when we, when the Department of Ed finally gives us our repayment plan, we're going to have to reduce those amounts in the future, because we have to repay this food service deficit that we have.
Okay. So, again, the state provides reimbursement for free and reduced lunches to, what's the percentage of children? Are we almost at 100%?
It's, I believe it's 98.5 right now.
So, 98% of the kids can go to school, and they can get a free or reduced lunch. Okay. So, that gets reimbursed from the state. Part of that reimbursement, we can charge off certain expenses that the city and the school has in order to process, whether it's administrative, et cetera. So, that's what the offsets, I'm just regurgitating this, so, people, including myself, can refresh. So, those are, it's like indirect costs that we charge to proprietary funds on the city side, same difference. Okay. So, you're saying that there was, Counselor Millen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. In your memo of September 25th, you talked about a corrective action plan for the food services sent into DESE for review. Is that something that we're going to hear on soon, or have we already heard on the corrective action plan?
So, there was a, with the administrative review of December of 2017, we did submit corrective action plans. After that, we were, had a resource management review, because we didn't respond quickly enough, and we are still working that out. That's the part that we're going to, we're working out the repayment plan right now. That's the final piece.
Does that go back one or two fiscal years, if I could?
It's actually, this review is of the FY '16, '17 year, and so, we, but the $2 million, the $2 million that we're going to have to repay is for FY '16, '17, and '17, '18. We did not, we're not going to overcharge this year, so we won't have to repay the amount for this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any explanation for why that took place? I'm presuming that even our internal audit, our auditors, they're not going to be checking offsets, trying to understand how we can prevent this from happening next year.
If I may, okay, Madam Superintendent?
So, what we have done thus far is, we have communicated with the state, and we've had numerous conference calls with them relative to what can be charged as direct and indirect cost, how, if we are going to charge something as an indirect cost, specifically what we need to do at the school level, at the district level, to monitor that, and we've put plans in place for those items. Every year, we get a rate that we can't charge above that. So, what Ms. Turner has done in this current budget adjustment that we're recommending is to just put that amount in, and we were charging too much to direct. Is that correct?
Okay. We had the auditor here. Mr. Auditor, could you come to the podium and, is there some way for you, for you or your office, or to the business manager, one of the two? We're looking at '16 and '17, where there are significant offsets that were, that were not allowed, or determined that not eligible, or overestimated. And then, again, so you're looking at '16 and '17, '17 and '18, and we're in '18, '19, just so we are on the same page. We're looking at two years that we have to address this and process our repayment schedule. Is that something that you would have identified? I mean, the budget's loaded into Munis, and is, which would include offsets, correct?
Correct. I would enter the net amount that they would be looking at using.
Right.
The figures for the offsets would come from the school finance office.
Okay.
The expectation would be that they would work with, whether it's DESI, outside audit firm, other communities, whatever, to have the supports to back up the figures that they're using, and document their charges, and document the justification as to how they got to, the percentage they were using for those charges.
Okay. So, wouldn't DESI have identified at least '16 and '17, and brought that to the city's attention?
They did. They did during their review in December of 2017. As a matter of fact, these allowed rates are published, and they're based on an end-of-the-year report. So, if we had a 10-point, I think we had an 11.23% allowed that year, but we had a 21% indirect cost charge, approximately. But, yes, the Department of Ed does release these figures, and it's all on the website. It's all on the Department of Ed website on how to handle revolving funds, and how to handle the food service, and what is allowed to be charged.
So, this is a revolving fund?
Correct.
Okay. Do our auditors, the Powers and Sullivan, do they, wouldn't they take a look at this?
They look at it in the sense of, the transfers we've made had come from the school finance office, and we would then essentially move the charges that had been incurred in the general fund into the school lunch fund. So, they need to make sure that it's supported by the approved budget from the school side, whether it's in excess or beyond, whether it's in excess or below the DESI figure, that's between DESI and the school department to kind of identify.
Right. They're not, they're not looking to look at any adjustments against the budget. Once that's loaded, they're making sure what the city is putting in is matching what the costs are. Okay.
Speaking of Powers and Sullivan, three, I believe it was three years ago, when the city had Powers and Sullivan do an audit, they did, in fact, find that $1 million in transfers were done the previous June. And what they wrote at that time was that, basically, that was $1 million that should not have been transferred the way it was, and that if you're going to do this type of offsets, you need to document it in the budget. And it was the following budget cycle that the offsets were then included in the budget, but not a great deal of, you know, that's all Powers and Sullivan can do, is look at the transfers and say, "You're supposed to, you're not supposed to do this. That's not best business practice. You need to document it." And so, that's when it was added into the budget. But, they wouldn't know that you can only put in, you know, 12% or 10% in offsets, and when there were actually 21% put in. They would not know that part.
Well, that has to be part of the budget, if you're including that as part of your revenue.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have definitely corrected that for the current year, even though we had, this is what the budget, last night, we presented a modified suggestions, and we did reduce the amount to the food service offsets to reflect what the indirect cost rate is. And we also reflect, we also adjusted the use of facilities offsets. We met with the city back in August, the city CFO and the auditor, to look at some use of facilities offsets. We didn't have money in the accounts. We didn't have money to buy the beginning-of-the-year supplies, because you cannot spend money in a revolving account without having the dollars in there. And unfortunately, the budget was built with $412,000 in a offset to the food, use of facilities account, when historically, we haven't ever had $412,000. We've only had 300, an average of $300,000. So, the city met with me, and we realized that and adjusted the budget accordingly.
What is the impact moving forward on some of these things? I mean, you're in a tight budget, you're running a deficit. We have to repay this over the next, Madam Superintendent?
So, at this time, we have set a hiring freeze. Any decisions relative to hiring come through my office and the team, and we review everything. The main, the main purpose that we're in is educating children, so we are trying to keep the staff who directly impact children intact. Right now, we have a number of key positions at the district level that we are not filling. We're also looking at some positions that we were planning to put in place. We are holding on those. We are continuing to meet. We are trying to have conversations with the unions relative to the positions with the goal of trying to maintain as many staff as we possibly can.
So, we're a third, roughly a little over 25%, actually, no, not a third, in our fourth fiscal, fourth month of the fiscal year. Have positions been filled since July 1? Have positions have been filled since July one that were, new positions, backfills? Any positions to date?
So there have been positions that were filled, you know, teaching positions and a number of other administrative positions, yes.
Okay. How many positions and what's the dollar figure associated with those?
Since July one? I couldn't speak to that. I can speak to the number of positions that, since July nineteenth, there, the positions that were hired were principal positions. There were a couple of principals that were hired there. I'd be, I could give you, you know, the full rundown of those. I can submit those to the city.
Well, I just think it's good to know. I know this is a school committee issue. I'm just curious, how are you going to narrow that two point five million? I know on the city side that we, we held it, we started back last fiscal year when we knew there was going to be a challenge, so.
So I want to, I want to be very clear that these budget concerns became relevant to us when we started to go literally line by line. On July nineteenth, we were notified by the state in writing that we were going to be receiving an additional chapter seventy of one point one four nine million. That day, I sat, Ms. Turner wasn't in her position yet. I sat with our, our grants manager, and we went through the priority list of people that the school committee had deemed to bring back in the budget had we received additional funds. At that time, we reviewed and looked at fringe benefits, all of that. We were, we were pretty much able to bring back the priority list of staff had we not been faced with some of these other issues. What happened that same day is I was, I was notified that there was, that we had some challenges with the certification of our food service numbers for our children. We weren't getting the full amount that we had anticipated getting, and there were some challenges with that. I got on the phone with a number of administrators with the Department of Ed, and we appealed to them to allow us to recertify, to resubmit data. And that's why we were, we were able to get our, our funding up to the ninety, ninety-eight percent rate for food service. So that was another thing that we hadn't anticipated. So then, when Ms. Turner came on, we started going through each of the budget lines. We noticed that we needed to do something different around the food service, because we had a number of, of items that were as offsets that we couldn't use as offsets after speaking with the state. So we needed to make some adjustments, but those other staff had been hired. So, so we were not aware of that. As soon as it became very evident that with us trying to be, and, and we weren't overly conservative, we tried to say, okay, what can we get by with when, when we reestablished these accounts? So I, I just want to be clear that as soon as it became something that we knew we had to deal with, we, we addressed it immediately and, and asked for the freeze to happen.
Okay. I guess, and I'll just, simply my, my last thing. My overall concern, just from, from the city perspective, is, is what's going to happen not only this year, but next year and the following year. You know, I can remember a conversation or a presentation before the city council that the budget that was presented had, I believe it was a two million dollar shortfall, and they were looking for two million dollars more from the city. And if you take that two million of cuts that had to be made, and they were personnel, and moving forward, and whether, and the estimates are off, it still contributes to a budget that was out of balance, that has significant structural deficits, because these costs aren't going away. They weren't properly funded, but they're not going away, and that just, that increases the financial challenges, the financial issues that we're facing next fiscal, this year and next fiscal year. When you're talking about layoffs, look, the city has, has given more to the school department, and whether it's for busing or others that otherwise, there's still the cost of, of education. And, and that will be sort of, but we've given more, you know, cash, if you will. I understand there's some, some, some charging issues that we will sort through. We've got more from the state on the city side that, you know, the well, the well's dry too. So where do we go with a presumably four point six that is structural on top of cuts that were already made moving forward? And let's face it, it comes down to, you know, you're looking at a hiring freeze. So to me, it's about personnel, and to me, you know, it's, it's personnel costs. And those costs are, they're real, they're not going away. There's a, you know, a contract was approved, a four-year contract. Those costs aren't going to, in fact, they're increasing. So I'm very concerned at how that gap is going to be closed without layoffs of people, of teachers in the classrooms. So, sorry, that was a long-winded statement, but that's what it is. It's this year, and, and moving forward, you know, we're in, we're in tough shape.
So.
Before we run time, before we run out of time, excuse me, one of the, the issues that I'd just like to bring up is the television studio and the PEG funding. We had asked if we could get a report on what the city takes in every year, what, from the Comcast. What the PEG funding is, is public education and government. That's the, the contract we have with Comcast that the city gets reimbursed money to run the public access and for education. To my knowledge, previously, the school department was getting about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And then after the Mass Municipal Modernization Act was passed, where the money did not come directly to the school department anymore, but had to be approved by the council, that was cut to a hundred and eight thousand dollars. There was some type of confusion this year at the budget hearing, where the, the school committee approved the budget for the television studio, because we were told that we were getting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's why we approved it. As it turned out, that did not happen. I don't know where that confusion was. But if we could get a report of how much we do get from Comcast and how much is actually given to the education portion of that, that cost us about somewhere around a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. Is that pretty close to the audiovisual? Five hundred and forty-two thousand, thank you.
Oh, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll, we'll get you a report. Our facts are, differ from what was recited, but we will certainly get you that report.
Madam Superintendent?
I, I just wanted to state that we are doing exactly what you were saying that we needed to do. We are meeting with the principals starting next week and reviewing based, we're using enrollment figures. We're working with the special ed director and the assistant superintendent of curriculum to make sure that we're not overstaffed at any of the schools. So between finance, curriculum, and special ed, we are going to verify that, and that will help us with this current budget and next year. But I also wanted to let, state that we know how dire the circumstances are, because two years ago, we had five point one million dollars in revolving fund balances that could help us in times such as these, but those funds are wiped out. There's nothing left in the revolving funds.
What were those funds used for?
The revolving funds, such as food service, use of facilities, circuit breaker, circuit, these are funds that build up, that you are supposed to keep a healthy balance in them, so that when you have difficult times, you can fall back on them. It went from five point one million dollars in Munis, according to the Munis cash balances, five point one million dollars to eighty-nine cents in circuit breaker for this year. I mean, food service, as you know, we had to hold back three bills, because there wasn't, we didn't have cash. So we do understand how important it is to do that.
Madam Superintendent?
In addition, we are also looking at some of our district administrative roles presently, and trying to determine if there are some efficiencies that we can make, and that will continue on throughout to the next budgeting cycle.
Can you tell me, what's the payroll, weekly, well, annual, annual and even weekly? And I don't expect you to have that number off the top of your head, but what percentage of the budget is payroll?
I would assume eighty percent. I mean, that's.
Eighty percent. So, you know, making up the two point five, we can talk about the studio, you can talk about a lot of items, but the bottom line is those costs are running the school department, and I get, and I get it. And in order to narrow any gap, and, and it's, is going to be significant. You're looking at five million less the food service, so how much on an annual basis is that food service going to affect the budget, those offsets? A million?
We're working with the state to have a payment plan that will minimize the impact to students. We're not going to have to make direct payments from the general fund. Hopefully, that's what they're working on to, so we haven't finalized this, but I did ask if we can minimize the impact to students, because if we made errors, it shouldn't impact the students. And so we're trying to look at a four-year repayment plan, so if it's two million plus, we're hoping to reduce our offsets by five hundred thousand a year.
But you're going to have to adjust this year, you're going to adjust the budget, the offsets this year by how much?
This year for food service, I adjusted from one point five nine seven to one point two, I believe, so we reduced it by three hundred and.
And then that, that impact is going to carry next year on, on your budget too. Okay, so those are the, I'm not trying to jump the gun, but we'll get, you know, get through this year, and then next year is, it's significant on the city side, and it's significant on the school side, and I don't know how we're going to close that gap. Okay, I'm sorry. Any other question concerns? We still have a few minutes.
Just a, just a timing question. The audit that the school department has contracted for, do we have a timeline on that?
My understanding, when we asked about that last night, is it's just about finished, and they're putting together their draft, and it should be available within the next two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know we just got to a couple. Are there any significant other items? And we may run over just a minute or two, but I think it's important to get through this report. If we could get this report again to the members of the city council, I'm sure the school committee folks still have that. There's a lot in here. I'd like to meet again, just to continue to have this discussion, if there's no objection. I think it's helpful for both, you know, both governing bodies, and if, if you have additional information as you move forward, if we could get it just a little bit ahead of time, so we can not have to go back and ask you questions that have already been included in this, it'd be helpful. But is there anything else? I'm sorry, Council Noon?
Mr. Chairman, if you could get a copy of the audit report as well to all the, the subcommittee here, the finance, as well as the council, prior to the hearing. Appreciate it.
Prior to what hearing?
Prior to the next.
Our next meeting?
Finance Subcommittee hearing.
Thank you.
Any, any other items you want to outline? I know we get to the three point two, and there were some small items that bring us to the four point six.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood that the four point six million dollar deficit does not include the two million dollars that we have to repay, but other than that, I, and to.
Did you tell us how many years we have to repay that? And there's no way that the state's going to?
That's exactly what is holding this up.
Okay.
They actually said specifically that they don't want this to take five years to repay, and I, I was shocked, because, well, that would impact us if we, one point twelve, one point two million dollars, even if it's offsets, that's going to reduce what we can put in our budget by one point two million. So I sent a memo requesting for a four-year repayment at least.
Okay.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarification, Ms. Turner, that payment is not like we paying them, paying them out of pocket, I mean, to, from account to the state or anything. We just transfer from one account to another. Is that right? Is that correct?
Yes, but unfortunately, it still has a direct impact to the general fund and to instruction, because when we reduce the general fund, the amount that we spend on teachers and instructional cost, because we have to put it back into the food service, we're restricted with how we can spend the food service money. So one way or the other, it is a direct hit to our education of what we can offer.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was under the impression that we had an agreement with the state on repaying this without us really taking a major hit. What, why did that change? Do we know why that changed from the state end? I was under the impression that they were trying to be as cooperative and helpful as possible for us to not be taking a hit, a real hit.
They, they do consider this cooperative. We have to pay back two million plus dollars that we charged off, and they are actually considering themselves quite cooperative when they told us in December of two thousand seventeen not to do it, and we still did it, and we still built our budget on these same findings. So they think they're being cooperative.
Okay, we've got to wrap this up. If members are available in two weeks, I'm not sure if this chamber is available, but we will go into the mayor's reception room, because I think, you know, they, they will record and broadcast later. I think it's important that we stay, stay on this, as, as well as, you know, both sides and continue to have this dialogue. I feel it's quite important. Not all of us get to see the whole meeting. So, Council Malanazo, Council Noon, can we make it? Members of the school?
That would be October thirtieth.
Okay. So we will see what room is available, but either way, I think we're moving forward. We just have to continue, continue with this. Anything else, Madam Manager, Madam Superintendent? I know the mayor's probably rapping on the door to get us to move out of here, so we'll do that. Motion, entertain a motion to adjourn by.
Motion to adjourn.
By Council Noon, taken by Mr. Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those who oppose, motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much, Billy Joe.